Order, we have a forum, I would take a motion to approve the agenda and the methods. Alright, okay, right.
Not a whole lot to discuss here, we'll send an ad out for. We had a sad out here a couple of weeks ago for employees, we'll send another one out, try to get some more applicants in. Sounds like the three ninetieth bridge, they might wanna start for the deck later this week, so hopefully three or four sometime soon, that's a minor thing. And still no word yet on one oh five, other than it still looks late September, early October, we're gonna probably. We ran into that whole bridge thing where we are gonna have a bridge decker place, it's just pavement over that. But for some reason, the contractor didn't wanna remove that pavement, it's only another thirty feet of pavement. Wanna get involved, they think that there's a lot of steel or something, right, I think it's just a road, so we went out and cut it ourselves, we'll take it out when they come in and remove stuff. So far, not a whole lot of uh. Their schedules, I'm gonna guess they're still looking at. The paving, once the plant comes in. Sure, they'll let us know sooner rather than later.
Is it concrete or is this asphalt?
Just like the stretch from. Same, same design, I guess, anyway.
Yeah, we're making a wire too, right?
Yeah, we're doing a three foot widening unit on there.
When you send out your ad, uh, send one to Melissa also.
Oh, yeah, right.
She'll, cause she's posted on that I jobs thing, and it kinda gets across the whole state, so. If anybody's interested in moving back to the area or something.
Something in the one oh five deal would be, I'm assuming, we talked about, I know farm, you know, bin dryers and stuff like that, field entrances too, we're gonna try to, you know, get. Those back up to date.
Once they, once they are open to.
To travel.
We'll put fillets in there, and if they're an active driver, we'll get more in there.
Right, some are and some aren't.
Right now, they focus on getting the driveways and this time. If it was in the middle of summer, we just put the minimal amount into the shoulder group. But if we've got active driveways, because we're out farming, we'll put more on.
Are we gonna blackout back on the gravel roads?
Except for.
Yeah.
The two dead end roads, there are more driveways than there are roads.
Right, gotcha.
Everything else, we have the, you have the fillets on it, keeps the rock off the road. Easier for our maintenance guys, they don't have to stick their motor graders out in the middle of the highway if they're trying to do the intersections, the intersections always get tore up anyway with any traffic, you can't keep enough rock on them, so yeah. We're just gonna continue that as a practice anyway, it seems like, I wish we would've started it ten years ago, but.
Yeah, it does help.
That makes a difference.
It really makes a difference.
Well, they take all that runoff and salt and crap, and then the first fifty hundred feet is just. Cause it all just leaks in there, eats frost out, turns it into mud, way before everything else.
So, if we ever get. More money, always do other hard service roads that way, but it's easier to do it when you got a contractor and then to go back and do it.
Right.
Well, that's why we do it with the DOT too, when they get something done, they can.
The question about. Uh, is it rated Noel Spruce? Three hundred between three hundred and seventy and three hundred and eighty, it's right along the river. There's a bridge there that spent ten tons for quite some time, is that on the list to get?
Yeah, it's, I don't even know if it's.
Might be a box.
It's a little box, I think, yeah, we're. Trying to get organized and trying to get the right size pipe fit in there, it's just the timing.
Just a pipe that most likely go by.
Cause it's right by the river.
Yeah.
To me, the hydraulics, that what governs that pipe more than anything is the river coming up.
Yeah.
You know, you're not gonna back water up, but.
Yeah.
If the river comes up, doesn't matter what size pipe you got in there, you're gonna back.
It's not gonna leave until.
So, uh, but yeah, we've got that. I've just been doing design on the highways and stuff, and these, and that's one of those short bridges that we've had, but yeah, it needs to get, is it?
It's a narrow one too, I know.
I'll look at it again, you said it was Raven?
Yeah, no. Between three seventy and three eighty. I can't remember if that stays spruce, or if that turns into Robin. Wait, no, that is Raven, no, it's not, no, that's spruce.
Oh, yeah, okay. There's three seven, yeah. Oh, that's right, cause it's a small, it's a small bridge, I was looking at. Looking for the circle, and that's to not a.
Yeah.
Bridge.
It's south of the river bridge.
Yeah, it's on our list.
So, good, any else?
No, I, oh, yeah, I did get. The summary back from the intersection down there. I'll review that, maybe give you guys a copy. A lot of things, I mean, there's so many things we can do down there.
Right.
If we do. If we do decide that a four-way stop, then we still gotta do a study, I mean, this was a. A more of an investigation of options, but if you do that, then you gotta do a study, and it's just. I'll have to review that here. You guys a copy of this, because there's other things we can do before we do that.
Try to promote. Get people's attention, keep their attention, maybe?
No.
The trouble's trip it, three seventieth or three eighty up all the way up.
Great, you know, the, the one thing they talked about was the short, the short run from the south, coming up there to three mile run before you twist stops, and well, you're gonna have the same issue coming from graph. It's a short run from graph, it's the west, so you still got a short leg, that are people are gonna. If they're talking about not used to doing that long of a runner, that shorter run, not expecting it, you're gonna have the same thing coming from another direction, so.
Well, it's gonna be tough for anybody that's lived there for twenty years.
Habits just completely changed. Add more flashing lights, I guess. But, well, I got it, we'll look at it. Maybe take steps. Best fits our needs.
Is there anything else for it? Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, drainage. Go, start with the regular claims.
We need an approval of the final favorite was for DD thirteen, that three.
Hold on, everybody's happy out there and. That'll be picked up, I know this.
Which that's still gonna be a little ways away, cause we're gonna re-class.
So. Yeah.
Approve the final pay for thirteen.
Final pay for DD thirteen is forty-four thousand seven sixty-six eighty-one. There's motions are second. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose.
That one's included, but there's a couple other ones on there too.
Okay, then the regular claims to stand for it's. The motion to approve these standpoints for drainage. Good, there are questions or special? All favor I? I oppose. Upper Goose Lake group drain.
Are you ready for a full number, Enis?
What was the number to get out of here?
Nine, one, seven, one, two, two, five, zero. Four, three, one, eight.
This Jacob?
Hi Jacob, AJ Stone, Worth County Supervisor. Well, we got you in our meeting here on speakerphone, um, to discuss the upper Goose Lake. Situation.
Yeah.
So, we've got a group that's obviously taken care of their own lateral for a number of years, number of years, and wanna bring it into a drainage district, what's? What's the process, what's the recommendation?
Um, so we're recommending that Goose Lake Mutual Drain. Facilities be taken over by, is it PD seventy-two?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and Jackie, when we talk to Jim, it doesn't need to have a public hearing.
Correct, we do, it's just a motion, because it's technically already a facility. And I guess they're just, the board is just accepting it as a county facility.
And so, you then, moving forward, we would need to do some kind of a reclassification.
And then wasn't it?
There's the existing schedule, which treats everyone the exact same on that mutual frame, looking at it. Um, so everyone pays the exact same dollar per acre. Which is, I don't know how we would do it today, we would do it on benefits, but it's up to, it's up to you guys, if you guys want. To do it that way, you would still have to, you'd still have to hire up the dealers. And, but it'd just be a really quick, easy process, or we could do it as. It's, it's already current, all those lands are currently in fact, within DD seventy-two. So you could just throw them in there, as they are, or you could have us actually. Do a reclassification for it, do a classification for it, we would go through the factors, like what we did on DD two, where it was good.
You mean reclass all of seventy?
Seventy-two then.
Uh, we would only have to do this branch, but.
But seventy-two isn't done.
We could do the whole thing, but as part of it, maybe wouldn't be a bad idea too.
It would be the thing to do if we're, we're adding, if we're adding to the facility, I mean, technically adding, we should get the whole thing up to today's specs.
And then what else? Oh, is that, that, is it that close?
It might be, it's right down. It might be.
Well, unless it goes into nineteen seventeen or nineteen.
More, several more possible too.
Okay. We're good.
We're good.
It's into, um, well, it's next to our tri-joint, DD seventeen.
Okay, that's, yeah.
And we've already reclassified twenty-three, and that's above it, so seventy-two, you could probably kinda do on its own. Um, there's a little thirty-two by there too.
Yeah, thirty-two is within the district. We would probably reclassify that one as well.
Okay.
Main open deck, one C and one A, open this two. And then there's the B four drainage, which is a continuation of one B.
Well, they're anxious to get work done on this, I know that.
That's the other thing, do we, does the board need to engage you for an engineer's report then too, for repairs? And were improvements?
Yeah, cause this, this initial report was just to make it over, it's not. There is a plan profile included, but it's not a. Complete report with a cost estimate, or. Making a recommendation on repairs. Yes. If there's the interest from the landowners, it does look like there needs to be a clean out.
At least two of them that have been talking to me, Jacob, are very anxious to get it cleaned, because it's pretty well silted in, from what I understand, most all that's are under. Under dirt or underwater, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what, when we did our survey, and you can, you guys have the time profile there, you can see there's. There's a decent amount of sediment.
Yeah.
Like the, the private crossings that were installed were undersized. Today's fee recommend being replaced.
Motion to. Just exemption of the private drain. And then there were a couple of caveats on that, they recommend that we, um, assume the hundred. Hundred foot wide, um, area is district right of way. And then, um, not soon reset responsibility for pi- private culverts.
Okay.
Assume the maintenance and responsibility of the upper blue goose lake group drain.
Good.
So, motion to, uh, assume the private drain of upper goose lake. Um, along with the hundred foot right of way, easily.
But not the.
Um, private crossings are still to be. Private, privately funded or privately taken care of.
And private culverts. Correct, that's what he said, right? Pipes, private pipes would be not included.
For the mainness facility of the landlord.
Okay.
Right, their district, their district pipes are.
The district will be responsible for those.
I'll make that a motion.
So, motion for Mark, is there a second? One second it, any other questions or discussion?
And then should we go ahead on the reclass and engage, or should we do that at a different time?
I would probably get it going myself. Could be part of the whole engineering, I mean, they're, they're, they basically requested it was being cleaned, I mean, they haven't come in and signed for it, I guess, haven't they, but.
It's been a while, probably.
Do that today. I thought, I don't know if you have a petition signed for the repairs, uh, the board, you don't need to have a petition for repairs.
And you guys can just do it. Marion Holton and Mark Lovick both have requested it the last two weeks.
I'm gonna motion a second on the table for the assumption of that was, uh, with the, uh.
I'm sorry, I dropped on.
All in favor of that motion, I. I opposed, alright, so that motion will be taken care of, um, why don't we put on? Do we need to put on for next week, or can we do it? Stuff to engage, engage up for DD seventy-two reclass, and engineer your board on the upper, this lake. Have to take a motion to, um, have, make do that.
I will make that a motion.
Watch my mark. I'll second it. Second by Enis, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose. Right, gonna engage you in that, Jacob, and work on a study of that.
And then can we keep you on for DD forty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, we had, uh, we got two landowner meetings now with DD forty-eight, and there's a section up towards the top end that. Um, one of the farmers thinks that the, the pipe is a needed repair. Um, it's, it's pretty shallow, somebody years ago had taken and cut a hill out of this area, took a lot of the cover off of it. Um, and there has been some repairs in that area, the pipe still seems to be flowing, everybody towards the bottom end of it, just fine.
Yeah, they're not wanting.
They're not really wanting to do it, but the guy on the top end wants to at least look into making some repairs on the top. Top section, so. And we can get you a map of the area that we're looking at.
I actually sent it to you a while ago.
Yeah, Jackie sent it to me.
Okay. Okay, so what they wanna do is basically a study on that, to see, we can tell what kind of shape it's in, if it needs to be.
Now, was that just technically a lateral, or could we get by, or you wanna look at the whole thing, it needs to be reclassified.
Yeah, we're basically looking at the upper end of the main, the way I see it, but it needs to be reclassified.
For sure.
For sure.
Yeah.
Is that that lateral fifteen?
Excuse me, it is.
Yeah, it's upper.
Comes from, uh, the landowner, Darlene Matsons, would be the one landowner there, and in that area going east.
Three, three, or, uh, three, four ten, and John. Four ten and John Close, where it kinda starts going to east from there.
And there's all kinds of laterals, and.
Maybe it is.
Well, he'd, he'd be on a lateral to get down to the main.
Cause he dialed this one right here, right?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
All of them.
So, what, I can't read it.
And I'm guessing you probably could even annex some land in, and all kinds of good stuff, I would guess.
Right.
Plus the schedule's a mess.
Yeah, yeah, we have one schedule, and that's it, so it would make things a lot more fair.
What is that?
And there's an A, and there's all kinds of laterals.
Yeah, basically, if you go from Johnville. Jacob, if you go from Johnville to the east, and then it goes north across the road, north of four ten, that's the area.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, half mile back. Or, okay, that's. Okay, you see the building site there where we were walking? Right there. So, from that area right there.
Actually, about a half mile west of Johnville, there's a building site. Go from that area back to the east. Across Johnville, then north of four ten.
Okay, in section twenty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, section twenty-seven, and.
He's not at that fourteen. Fourteen to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this would all be thirty, this would all be thirty-four.
Yeah, it's like twenty-seven and thirty-four, Jacob.
Cause that's. Through your machine.
Mainly, he wants to know if he can do anything with that one, main or lateral, or get more depth, or.
Right. Did all of this come in there?
It could.
I would, depends on which way it goes, but I would guess.
Probably does come in there now.
It looks like it's coming in there.
I take it that whole part of that field, cause it's battered by oak.
Yeah, you know, it's gotta be coming over that ladder.
So, anyway, look at that.
Yeah, if you can look into that, and look into reclassifying. We're gonna reclassify.
From a study standpoint, I think we have to study the whole main, with it being at the upper end like that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
So, I'm gonna make a motion and we engage them for reclassification, DD forty-eight.
As well as study.
As a study, yeah, as well as a study on the, on the main.
Okay, there's more to engage, make for reclass and study on DD forty-eight main, is there a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose. Emotional carry, Jacob, you can move ahead on that one also.
Put him on the list.
Give me free time.
I think that's all we got for you, Jacob, so thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Bye. Okay. And yes, that's it, isn't it?
We'll find something extra door.
Uh, claim, regular claims. Any questions or concerns with those? Alright, motion to approve claims, is there a second? Alright, all favor I? Payroll claims. To approve payroll claims. Motion is second, all favor I?
For your fifty center guys. So, if, um, for Isaac, oh, one doesn't matter, for Isaac.
Payroll change.
That's the last bump.
When your, when your pay fees.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll claim, I guess, for Isaac, right?
They will change, yep.
Change.
There's motions are second.
I'll say it.
Alright, any other discussion? They write. I oppose.
Sorry. Yeah, I do not like the new reports, they're not, no, they're, looks like Diamond Joe was LLC, but.
Uh, Joe stopped.
Or, yeah.
Motion to approve license for Joe's stock.
I'll make a motion to approve that license.
Alright, any other discussion? All favor I? I oppose.
Should be a simple one-page printout.
You did, no, uh, and, and this is an improvement.
Yeah, the rest is the most horrible, this is worse. I don't agree. Twenty-eighty, Elder Bridge.
Yeah, I keep trying to. Keep trying to roll through these. Head prices, and I forgot, didn't need email, so get that one through.
Another couple of agreements that we've worked with for years, so do you motion to approve the twenty-eighty with Elder Bridge Agency and Crisis Intervention Service? There's a motion to say it. Any other discussion? All favor I? I oppose.
Yes, things are changing with, but, yeah, with Cobra, so luckily, they have somebody who is going to administer that now for us, so. I would appreciate you.
Listen to engage them to take care of our Cobra stuff?
Yes, you keep us from meeting Jeff's help.
Okay, so this is group, is this a group, and a partner?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to. Midwest Group Management Incorporated to have a Corba service agreement, alright?
Yeah, there's motions are second. Second it, alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I? I oppose.
Apparently, this year is flying by, Oxy.
All their fees for. Take care of our buy down, or our health insurance? Okay, there's motion to approve the, uh, buy down agreement. And the schedule A agreement, I'll make that a motion.
This is a buy down agreement, that's like if we participate in the, I mean, all the programs, is that what this is about, or?
Just the Oxy and part of the.
Okay. I'm good.
Alright, all favor I? I opposed.
We are building that fund.
Going in the right direction then?
She said his building is a no.
That's good, it does it, so. Alright, uh, what's called, she will be on this morning, she's meeting with a least prospect possible there for the interchange, so. And then she's gotta help uh, Manley. City of Manley, Zoe, they have a board meeting coming up, uh, cause they need to change the zoning at the terminal. Yeah, deal again. She's just gonna talk with them now, so it may be like two weeks, but.
Okay.
Um, to change zone in that area, the terminal to a heavy industrial.
Since it's in the two mile.
This is the two mile thing, it's, it's up to them, but yeah. Well, they did the, they did loop.
Okay.
The north, north of three seventieth there. Um, but this, it's, it's all commercial, I think, or industrial, but they need to go heavy industrial. So they have to change something in there, Nyakog's gonna help them change something within their deal and then. Um, the bottom meeting to change that area into heavy industrial, so. Just the process, I guess. Alright. Uh, Mark Crowell, discussion and plan to set a date on the windmill work development agreement, Mark, can you hear us alright?
I gotcha, can y'all hear me?
Sounds good.
Awesome, well, I appreciate y'all letting me jump on here today, um, little, a little bit under the weather this morning, so apologizing a little. Uh, far dicker, not as sharp as, as usual, but um, I think really the agenda point hits it. What I'm, I'm here to just talk about today, um, we've been working through some of the details, you know, I know there's been some back and forth amongst. Uh, the attorneys over the past couple of weeks on the development agreement and, uh, you know, at this point, we're looking to see if we can get just a, a, a backstop date on this. Um, like the universe of outstanding items or just items of discussion is fairly small, so hopefully a week or so, we should be able to. To have any more discussion on things that are required and, um, we're just really looking to get some clarity on the timeline here. And, and get a date set, like our, our project has been more or less in a spot to, to be ready to. You know, to, to be finalized for, you know, a month or more now, and it's just eating into our timeline a little bit, so. I was posing the twenty seventh as a date, um, gives us another week, I think, you know, we're, we're okay with maybe early October as well, the fourth, but wouldn't. Would, would request that any type of, of date be set, not go further than that, just given we're. We're trying to get some clarity around what the next steps for the project are gonna look like.
Okay, um, well, we did have a, a discussion, closed session discussion on Friday with our attorney. Um, and he made some recommendations. On what we should do, whether it's to join this agreement or move or act on an ordinance. Um, so that's a word, we've got to decide as a board which direction to go. Um. Hmm, we can. Me personally, I would like to see. A little more discussion going on the development agreement, but it doesn't sound like we're gonna go any further that direction. Uh, sounds like you guys are pretty much where you want to be with the development agreement, that's it, is that safe in saying that?
Uh, yeah, you know, I do, I, I think we're, uh, we're, we're at a spot that, you know, we felt like we've made a. A number of concessions, I mean, to be honest, I, I think that that, that agreement has, has really been. Just a series of, of updates, trying to listen to things that are important and put something in place that's a significant. Jump from what's, what's in place there and those, uh, specifically those unzoned portions of the county here today. Um, you know, and just feel like what we have there is on par with some of the most restrictive ordinances or development agreements. That have really ever been put together in Iowa, um, and so, you know, I, I think with that as the backdrop. We're, we're pretty close to where we think the, uh, the, the final agreement would be.
Do you have a map? Or a, uh, anything with a specific location and specific number of turbans that are gonna go in the county?
Yes, sir, I, I had that sent through Brett, our attorney, he's out. Um, so that might have not, not gotten to you all just yet, uh, but know that we did put together those exhibits that were. Were described there and, and I listened at the Brett, so if you haven't gotten that, that'll be around here pretty close.
Mark, this is, uh, Will Reasoner, I have not received those exhibits, I did request those, so if you could follow up with Brett. I will do the same, cause I, I think that's pretty important that we see what those exhibits actually say.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That also show each residential homeowner?
Of course.
Um, yeah, what we have right now is.
You're gonna show the areas that are involved, that have signed up. For the agreements and the ones that haven't, and then you're gonna put a spot in there for where the windmills are going with it. This distance of setback of sixteen, whatever it is, that you guys said in the presentation. And then you're also gonna show each residential homeowner, the houses that are out there. As a spot too, so we can see how far they are away.
So, um, and the actual exhibit to development agreement, it was only gonna be the potential turbine locations. And participating footprint, um, and that's what we had compiled to send around. Um, just the, the green, green participating parcels along with, um. Along with those proposed locations, and then there's a second exhibit that shows the exact GPS coordinates of those. Uh, turbine locations as well, so that there's a, a really firm definitive spot of where those could potentially go.
Is there a measurement from the turbine location to all residences though? Cause that's, that's the way the development's agreement is drafted now that it's a certain number of feet from any residence, not just participating.
Yes, sir, so, I mean, it's, it's, the layout itself is, has those, all of the standards built into it, I mean, if there's. If you want me to maybe send along some supporting material too, outside of necessarily the exhibit that shows some of these things, I can certainly provide that. Uh, that would show distance to nearest residences or, uh. Or something very similar, I can follow up with Brett and, uh, and our team would get that too as well, whenever we send along the exhibits.
A big plus mark if you can get that.
See, the original map that I seen was the, your. Like a two by two laminated that showed every one of the residential homes in the project area. With at that time a fifteen hundred foot circumference around them. And if you took that and just put a spot in there is where that windmill's going.
I'll do that, um, yeah, I'll do that.
Seemed whatever that was, what was it, sixteen something?
Yeah, I think the, the minimum setback right now is, you know, we've got fifteen hundred feet, uh, I do think that just given every. Other layer of protection for the non-participating residents that we have in the development agreement, those design standards, it pushes it out, so. Um, it's, it's about sixteen hundred feet would be the closest, uh, on, on the layout that we have now. And so I can do that too, I mean, if that's, like, you remember the presentation that I gave, I talked through every, maybe a little bit of an info overload. On some of the, you know, the step back distances and whatnot, so I can, uh, I can make sure and send, send some of those in a static. Uh, a static map here. For the next day or so.
That'd be great, cause, um, that, that's one thing that's gonna hold me up personally is, is a map with specific locations.
Sure.
And a specific number. Um, so.
Okay.
Right now, you're for the whole project area at forty four.
Yeah, let me look here too, um, the way that we have it. Piece together, yeah, so there's. Computer found it a little slow here, um. So with it, there's the, the ultimate. Turbine technology has not yet been selected here, so there's a little bit of, of, of flexibility built in. Just on the fact that, you know, we're showing in these exhibits, just any potential location. Um, oh, are you guys there, did I, did I lose y'all? Alright, um, my computer on the back end is, is freezing up, um, so it'll be any potential location, there's not, you know, what, what you'll see here too is when you design the project. Like we have to such strict standards, there's not a ton of additional locations, so what will be included in the exhibit and depicted as well. Is all the possible locations, knowing that the final number and mix will be. Fewer than what, um, you know, what, what we sent along, I think there was also information in there about us looking to take, um. You know, the least impactful turbine locations first, we'll have to continue to kind of chip through what that would look like, uh, over the next couple of months as well, so. All that to say. Trying to pull up the exact number here, but it's not, it's not, uh. It's not, uh, letting me do it on my side, but, um, we'll follow up with that in, in the exhibits, you'll have. Those exact locations and potential number, uh, here in the near future.
Okay, well, that helps anyways, um.
I was just gonna say, you know, kno- knowing that there's, you know, relatively small number of, of items here, are you all opposed to go ahead and, and, and getting. You know, getting a date locked down here, I mean, I think, you know, a week or two should be, should be more than enough time to be able to kind of circle back through some of. You know, any outstanding items, um, you know, to, to be able to inform you all to make a decision, we're just looking for a little clarity. On the timeline as well, if that's possible.
Um. It's up to these guys, I, me, I don't, I'm not gonna set a date for nothing until I see this stuff, I'm gonna play stubborn on it, cause. Thing I wanted to see since we've discussed, started discussing all this was an exact number and a map, so I'm gonna hold my ground on that. Um, these guys can, uh, you know, they got a choice too, so. If they wanna do, look at next week possibly vote now, that's fine, if wanna wait two weeks, it's up to them.
Well, I think you wanna get your information that you're looking for, we get that information here, something we could entertain, I guess, you know, but. Guys wanna see that information, you need to.
That's what I've been after, is, is the turbine location, the circumference around it, and where that is in retrospect to the. Houses we've got out there.
You won't vote until you get it anyway, so.
Right.
Until we'd actually receive it in our hands, yeah.
So even if you did set a date, it wouldn't do anything.
So.
It's more for us, e- even if it's early October, just something for us to have that's set to work towards, so we know. Um, you know, kind of where, where we're trying to get information back and, and get it to y'all here in a, in a quick manner would really help, just. You know, wha- whatever happens, whatever direction.
Considering Mark that you're gonna get this stuff to us this week. Why don't we just put it on the agenda for next Monday to pick a date, then set the date once we look at it.
Good, gotcha.
Makes sense?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like mutual agreement here, I guess, so.
I have one question for you, you have all had this project area laid out as to where these turbines are going, but when you did that presentation, you showed. Five turbine locations outside the project area.
Um. Yeah.
They're right there.
Yeah.
And they're not in the project area.
Have to look and see, um. Yeah, maybe there's something that, uh, that you could.
There's three of them and then one on the bottom, but the rest, it's all in.
Everything.
So I think you explained that to me one day when I asked you about those two, is that those three or those five outside that area down there, which would be just north of me, actually. It's, uh, they also have land up in the Silver Lake area.
No, they're right over here.
I was thinking you were thinking right south.
No, there's three right there and one there and one down below there.
Gotcha, okay.
So they're way on the east, in the southeast corner of the project area, but they're not in the project area. They'd be down in public.
Yeah, one of them's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, so, you know, those, those specific ones there, um, you know, all, all of the, those turbines, what was that?
Project area expanded?
No, it hasn't expanded, um, you know, those areas and those footprints over there were. At, at one point in time, you know, potential alternatives, you know, we had land there, sign, sign land on that boundary. Um, you know, for, for a number of reasons, just people being interested in the project and wanting to, to provide as much of a footprint that they could. Uh, you know, with that, we weren't necessarily focusing on that area for. The, the majority of the development cycle, but recently, um, given all the, uh, given all of the. The coverage that the project has had, we have had more people just kind of reach out, that might wanna kind of piece some, uh, some parcels together and jump on. On board with a project, and so what it did, it created a, a fully connected project out to those areas. Uh, so just brings them into the fold, changes them from kind of an alternate designation that, you know, you'd love to have the flexibility for, but. Um, couldn't necessarily get there to where now, you know, they're, they're in the fold, uh, with, with our project, so all of these locations, everything that we've. Uh, we've compiled and selected, and all of it are gonna meet the, the design standards and terms setbacks that we discussed. In my presentation and the development agreement, uh, and this entire project area has, has been studied from environmental and. And environmental perspectives as well, so we do all those studies with a one mile buffer, just to, to be able to have. Little bit of wiggle room there on, on, on the edges and, uh, so I wouldn't say it expanded, it's just that, uh, based on feedback and. People wanting to, to come on board, you know, it, it made those, uh, more, a more firm part of our potential project area.
Any other questions or comments, guys? So, any else from you, Mark?
No, thank you all for your time, um, you know, I'm planning to jump on next week, get to that information as, as quickly as we can, um, and then go from there.
Okay, Will, and y'all send that our direction, I suppose, as soon as you see it, take a look at it.
I'll send it as soon as I get it.
Hey, Will, other than what we discussed here this morning, was there anything else added to the agreement in your? When you were talking to their lawyers and stuff, did you add anything?
Um. N- no, so the latest version that I've got was version five, um. And. If you recall during our closed session meeting, I had discussed, um, some, some thoughts. On additional revisions that were not essentially the big three, the setback, sound and shadow. Um. I, I'm just, I'm being a little hesitant, cause I don't wanna share what we talked about in closed session, I can, Enes, how about I follow up with you?
I'll get ahold of you.
Okay. Okay, anything else for me, guys? I might log off if, if we're done with this agenda item.
We're good to go, thank you, Will, appreciate it, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Okay, any else on that, guys, or good for now?
Yeah, let's get a really good map and all works and longitude and longitude on all works.
Alright, so we'll move on to, uh, Matt O'Brien with Nyakog, uh, wants to, we're gonna help us with, uh. Our county comprehensive plan, how you doing this morning, Matt?
I'm doing well, can you, can you hear me? Okay, yeah, so after talking to, uh, Jeff a few times and then going, uh, planning zoning meeting, we got a draft. Draft or a draft contract drafted here at Nyakog with Merle Nelson, our director. So basically, here's why I don't wanna talk too much, just wanna answer questions or, you know, listen to your concerns, if you have any bit. Foremost, on the contract, we have, uh, discussion of just the maps and data tables, some of that the county may be able to do on its own, but. Basically, we just want Nyakog to step in when you need Nyakog to step in, so we just did it on hourly rate, so. Basically, you'll leave up the county when you do need Nyakog to help you if you go the cop plan route. And then, uh, the next step we put in there was the writing the narratives, with some of the narratives, planning zoning, Jeff, the county staff can write on their own. So it's basically just try to keep it as simple as possible and just keep it a smooth process and, but still keep it professional. Process, you want professional maps, you don't just wanna go have screenshots on Google Maps or whatever, so.
Correct, and we, if you need any assistance, we've got some very good photography of the county that we could probably share if we need to. Um, Joel keeps our photon up on the up and up, so.
So the real, our last aerials are flown in nineteen, we have a reflight coming spring of twenty two, that'll be the next one, so.
So the aerial, our last aerials are flown in nineteen, we have a reflight coming spring of twenty-two, that'll be the next one, so.
Yep.
Yeah, so we do have that capability. If you should need anything for assistance with the maps or whatever, Joel's got, got all that, he could push onto you guys, so.
Yeah, so. Yeah, because one of the big parts, one of the most important parts of the comp plans have a future land use map for the entire county, every single parcel, basically. So a lot of it's obviously ag, but you just wanna make sure you have that, you know, what the, uh, planning zoning and the supervisors want.
Right. Like I said, you can get most of that from our website even, so.
Yeah.
On there, so.
Like we're telling Jeff, love it's pretty simple, so it's just trying to get it down, done in, uh, what's easiest on everyone, whatever manner.
Okay, so the agreement is, guys, basically to go through, work our county comprehensive plan, basically like they probably did back in two thousand nine. Uh, we could redo everything, uh, rate it fifty-five dollars an hour, um, not to exceed uh, two thousand dollars for maps and data and, uh, three thousand for, uh, the draft and the narratives and, and everything else, putting it all together, so a maximum spent to five thousand, is that correct, Matt?
Yep, correct. And then Jeff said, uh, him, county will take lead on meetings and the goals and objectives and all that, strategies.
Jeff is on the line if you need to talk to him.
Um. Is he in there?
Uh, he's, the phone number, oh, nine seven five, yeah.
Jeff Gorbal, can you hear me?
Yes. Um, yep, I've got you, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you. So everything seems alright with you as far as you and the zoning board to, uh, work together with NIACOG on this and?
Yeah, yeah, uh, Matt had sent us, um, he'd sent information to us ahead of time and he and I had a few rounds of questions on some of the stuff and, and so we added some notes to that. I provided that to the commission at large for everybody to take a look at. Uh, and then we had, uh, we had a discussion on it during our, our last meeting on the first Wednesday of the month. Uh, so all the commissioners had an opportunity to look at everything, decide what things that they felt were appropriate uh, to be in that first section of the comp plan, the state of the county kind of thing. Uh, so we held a, a vote on it. So what you have from, uh, from NIACOG now is an agreement to work through all those items that the zoning commissioners have that, had asked NIACOG to take a look at.
At what point do you need to engage the rest of the county?
Yeah, so, um, you may recall, I, we had laid out kind of a four-step plan. Um, step one was work with NIACOG to get the state of the county information. Uh, and then step two, kind of running concurrent, is to go through to evaluate how well the county has done on accomplishment of the goals that were stated in the comp plan, uh, that was approved in two thousand six. So the, uh, commission members discussed that during the last meeting as well, how we would go about that. Uh, our plan is, we've got a series of questions, uh, drafted up that the commission will look at, uh, at our next meeting. Uh, questions related to the goals, uh, kind of a, essentially a survey, if you will, related to the goals. And then our intent is to provide that via, uh, some method that we can collect all the data together by, um, asking all of the county, uh, department heads, their opinion on the accomplishment of the goals. Um, all of the folks that participated in the development of the goals in the original plan, uh, the, uh, township trustees and then, uh, population at large, we would have online survey and then we talked about having a series of town halls as well. Not real sure how we would do the, the town hall piece, since it's really kind of a survey aspect. Um, but that would get us the feedback on the accomplishment of the goals. After that, um, we'd collect all that data, digest it, uh, and then we would start the next round of activity, again with engagement with the county and, and county government and, and citizens on development of the goals for the new plan and then subsequent to that, working on strategies for, uh, how best, uh, the county could go about accomplishing those goals.
Oh, I would think we would probably wanna include somebody from every township from the get-go, Jeff, in these discussions.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we, we, we are. We're, our, our plan, based on our conversation with you guys, uh, a month ago, is to engage through the township trustees.
Okay.
And so, as, as soon as we, we have, we just wanna make certain that we, the survey questionnaire that we've set up, um, is asking adequately about each of the goals, uh, and then we're gonna start reaching out to the township trustees and, and move forward with the actual survey activities.
I mean, include city mayors too, especially if there's, you know, or somebody from the council, I mean, you should get those people involved. I would think you would wanna get some of the community business leaders involved also possibly, because they're part of the comprehensive development plan. I know that's getting to be a large group, but, you know, they're all part of the growth and development of this county.
Right, yep.
Not just a few people, so.
Oh, no, no, it, it, it's gonna be very, very broad. As I said, that, you know, the, the constituents that we're, we've talked about is, uh, it's really just a matter of how we go about engaging with them. Um, we felt that the county department heads, you know, we could engage with them in a common fashion. The people that had developed the goals in a common fashion, uh, and then the citizens at large, uh, common fashion through survey and, and, um, uh, the, uh, town halls and then trustees and, and other folks we would target with, uh, specifically by name.
Sounds good. More the better, I think, so.
Yep, yep.
Good.
So should the board be appointing people to that committee, just like you guys were appointed, or?
Their board, they should be.
Well, that's, that's what I, yeah, that's what I had asked, uh, a couple of months ago, um, when I laid out the kind of the, the broad four-step process. Uh, and at the time, you guys had directed us to, to work first with the township trustees from each of the townships. Uh, to create essentially a committee at large of the zoning commission and the township trustees that would, you know, that, that group at large would kind of carry it forward, but with engagement across the broader community.
Yes.
But if they're not actually your board, they're not helping with the decisions that you're making in the beginning.
Well, no, they, they, they would be. All we're trying to do right now is just get the administrative stuff done, right? Get the approval to work with NIACOG, um, get the, the concept of, of the survey questions. Um, and then, as I said, after this next meeting, that's when we'd be reaching out to the township trustees to create this committee at large to say, okay, well, now let's carry this forward. We gotta go out and, 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 you know, get this information and figure out, you know, how do we, how do we develop the, uh, the responses to evaluation of the goals, how do we develop the new goals, et cetera.
Yeah. Sounds good to me, I guess. I mean, as long as we get as many as we can involved throughout the county, that's the big thing. Um, at the end of the day, it doesn't go anywhere until it hits this table, so. Um, we know then that who's all involved and how much of a, how much participation we got throughout the county. Um, that's always, that's always seems to be a, a bit of a struggle sometimes too, so.
But trustees are elected officials.
What's that?
Trustees are elected officials, so are mayors.
Yeah, we need them to get engaged in this thing.
Well, and if nobody's talked to them yet, they don't know.
Which should be there.
First, they're getting the paperwork.
Yep, good. Okay, so I guess I would take a motion to approve the agreement between NIACOG and our county to, uh, assist with our county comprehensive plan.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second? All right, motion a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Mine.
I oppose, emotional carry. Matt, we'll get a copy sent back to you guys and, um, you and Jeff can start working together on this and just kind of keep us in on the loop as it progresses.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, thanks, bye.
Jeff. Okay. Uh, people's service, hopefully there's anything new there. Uh, board appointment for homewarming?
She took the
Took a paper, but.
Paper, but I don't have an app yet back.
So she's working on it, right?
We're deciding.
We're deciding, let's hope she goes.
Right. Okay, we'll just leave that there for now then. Uh, security committee discussion, um, and did send back a updated.
So Electronic Engineering says back a quote with, uh, the, the, bringing up the analog cameras up to digital, so upgrading those and then adding three cameras to the exterior, one would be hung on the secondary roads building that would cover the east side of the courthouse. Um, and then we would have one camera on the south side that would cover the south entrance of the courthouse or the south facing part of the courthouse from, from the exterior down. And then also from the west side down to the, you know, manhole cover area and the door and the, the parking lot. The sheriff's office, so that's the quote you guys should have, I think, for the sheriff, but.
You got that, Andy, I looked at it.
Yeah, there's a copy.
Otherwise, I have to scroll through.
I like dropping stuff off.
Yeah, and the sheriff is just joining us now, he's got questions from him, so.
I forgot to ask Dan if he had any money to throw at this or not.
Yeah.
Or how.
Dan, that's something we discussed before, is between you and Joel, can you work this in the budget?
In.
Hey, Dan, we're just going over the, uh, the security camera quote.
Uh, I guess I, okay, all I heard, we're just going over the security camera quote.
I know last we had talked, you and Joel were trying to work together on this to see if we couldn't work it in through your guys' budgets now? Is that possible? Do you guys got it figured out, or?
Well, we don't have it figured out, but we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I think between the sheriff's budget and my budget, we can make this a reality.
This proposal.
This portion, yeah. This is the, this is the bare bones of it.
Just getting some cameras and updating equipment, which could be used going forward.
Second page has got, what, the total's like?
Fifteen, something.
Fifteen, sixteen, ninety-seven.
We cut it in half, but taking out some of the other stuff. Yeah. So, and with the, the tree trimming that was done, that will help as well, so.
Yeah, there was.
The dead one's gone too.
And so I know Brian said they were gonna get rid of the one, dead one, and trim a bunch of stuff back.
We had the full session.
This was a friend that came here. Walking outside the courthouse, take a look.
Yep.
So, yeah, that, that east side is a really tough one. That's where the sheriff decided, um, that possibly putting that camera on, you know, the secondary roads building and pointing it, you know, towards any side.
Stomach, used to have our best coverage.
Okay. Good. Anything else to add, Dan?
Um, I know, you've got it all, buddy. I don't know even what you said, but I'll agree with you.
Dan's man for all of it.
Amen.
We just found the budget we're taking.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we needed the lighting, we got that. This is the, the bare minimum that we would probably need to get a little closer to pass by and SISA.
Some steps we're taking.
Yeah.
And, and that's the big thing. We know, they don't expect us to, to read everything, but as long as we're showing, you know, positive steps forward, I think we're a good chick.
Doing what we can. Okay, so I guess, um, take a motion to approve the security upgrades, electronic engineering to your camera system.
I'll make that a motion.
Cause there's a second.
I can second.
Alright, any other discussion, Adam? Hearing none, all favor I?
Mine.
I oppose. Alright, emotional carry, if you, Joel, you wanna contact them and?
I'll do that.
Have you been in touch with Adam Sauer at all? Cause he might appreciate knowing that you're doing more too.
He sent that email out.
The security update.
Yeah, I didn't respond back.
Yeah, if you could pass that on to him and I guess I could send him the lights.
Yeah, let him know what, yeah, I saw it come through and he's looking to, to go through our security stuff now, while we're actually upgrading, so it'd be a good time for him to.
Yeah.
See what we're doing.
Make his report look better.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I did, uh, this is Mark, I did invite him to the next meeting if he's available or let him know what we're going through too, so.
When's the next meeting? Security meeting, you mean?
It should be October, first Wednesday in October. It'd be the sixth.
I think I got it down, so.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Um, next on list, there was a public health. Um.
Brian Lund is looking at prices on that hardware for that. He, he believes it's something that he he can do with a little help if I hold it in place while he drills the holes or something like that, so.
That was a discussion I had with him, he was gonna look at, see what it takes, if something he can do, or if we need to get a contractor to do, so. But, yeah, if you can assist him with that when he is putting them in, that'd be great, if it's something he can do, so. Definitely to hear back from him, I guess, and what expenses will be for crash bars. Alright, department had discussion, is there anybody, I think?
I'm curious, we're doing our Vanguard company-wide revow. Have you guys heard comments from people or what? Positive, negative, in between, just not understanding or?
Both.
Both. And just tell everybody to call the office, cause we're really, we can really explain it, you know, in layman's terms, so.
Yeah, I haven't physically had any calls or anything yet, but there's, I've just heard rubbish going around about all, we're just trying to raise our taxes, something gets done every so many years and we're past due, so.
Well, cause we're on a two thousand nine cost manual, it's just like building a house, we're doing costs.
Yeah.
And we've gotta change manuals, we're up to like one thirty, well, you gotta, you gotta go back in a hundred percent again, and so we really are pretty good about trying to explain it, so just tell them to call the office, so.
Okay, I've heard of both ways, but it's very few comments.
Yeah, so far we've only had a few that have been negative, so.
Well, I see, nobody likes change, but it's, it's past due. Um, so.
There's two chats. Recorder asking about our progress with F V H.
I gotta get him some numbers, I haven't had time.
Uh, AJ? Yeah. Uh, I just got notified, my other two explorers came in on Friday, the one Northwood bought came in last week, so the cars are in. I'm working with them and Comtech on getting them on the road. We're hoping by the end of October, we'll have all that done. And then I sent out, I got all the meetings set up with the city council, I sent out kind of a roster on that and Enos and I did meet with Northwood Ballahin, covered what we came out with there in, what, the week, so.
So we have one tomorrow night, is that right, Dan?
Yeah, I think Fertile's tomorrow night.
I'll meet you down there then.
Okay.
Man. Yeah, no. We've got more than a calendar for graftings.
Yep. I've got the rest of them.
Yeah. Alright, any else, department heads? Supervisor Weekly, Enos.
I went with the sheriff to the city of Northwood meeting on a twenty-eight E law enforcement agreement. It was a four-year contract with a three percent increase each year with, uh, vehicle every three years and I did find out through emails that they just, they're, they're gonna, well, I can't really say that now. The meeting hasn't been done with the city.
They're gonna take it to the council?
They, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Last bit, if their committee was subjective to approval, and hopefully there's a council will be there.
Yes, and it was, so. And then I had, uh, Partners for Children, we went through the funding. Uh, we approved a Connections Matter training coming up October fourteenth from one to five and, uh, we'll be sending out an email on that. So the other thing I attended was the Second Judicial District Department of Correctional Services. Through the budget there, and then Leah Knoll, the manager at BJ Clark in Mason City, did a presentation showing everything, but because of COVID, we couldn't go visit it. So that was very interesting. That was my week.
Jeff?
Mark? Um, I just had the Board of Health meeting this week, um, basically it was to prove some temporary hires for nurses' positions. We've got one on a person maternity leave, we're short a nurse, and we did get an application, it sounds like a big good application, but she can't start until, because sometime in November, so we got, well, Teresa and another one for temporary to help fill in on those things, and then we had a good discussion on mental health because of what's been happening here. got, well, Teresa and another one for temporary to help fill in on those things. And then we had a good discussion on mental health because of what's been happening here lately. Jesse's been in touch with Hannah, trying to set up some training for different things here in North Iowa and maybe even putting some seminars together in the school system, possibly if we can get the schools to go on. None of the schools are doing a bunch of stuff too right now, it sounds like, so. Hopefully they'll continue to work with their people and with Hannah and the group, so, kind of, you know, kind of, give them more prevention and, and, you know, it's it seems like things happen and then we forget about them. So we try to keep that in the forefront, so. The only other thing I did, I think we all probably got an email from RG that says right now we've only earned one percent for health insurance. Our goal is five percent.
Well, that's just for the assessment.
That's just for the assessment.
There's, there's other.
But, but that's our goal. And then we got to make sure we meet those goals to get our discounts too. And the assessments, you know, are those, uh, other things aren't quite as important, but yeah, it's good for you. You earn money if, if you know, if you complete them. I know they're kind of a pain. Takes time to get on there and do it, fill it in, and whether you do it properly or not, that's not the question, but want to stand top of that stuff, so.
I'm going in first week of October, so.
Good, appreciate it.
Get my physical done.
A comment on your mental health stuff, Brad Wright from, Brad Wright manages to run the, uh,
Yeah.
community center down here. And he had asked me if there was some way that the counselors could, they would set up a room inside there. And the counselors could come there, and they do work with turning leaves. And, uh, the problem is, is the kids don't like going to it in the schools.
Right.
Because
Peer pressure.
Peer pressure. And that way.
Somebody sees you leaving the counselor's office.
Yep, and he was, he's more than open to it. We could get the supervisors, we thought, I'm doing something there. I don't know if it's possible or not, but if you guys got any ideas, that'd be great.
I think we've got all the outlets we need. We just need to get everybody connected. Um, there's, there's been a lot of change and there's a lot more coming, but, yeah, I think everything's available. We just need to get everybody connected and try to.
Two sessions coming up, one in October, one in November. They'll be here in North County. One of them is, one of them's like agriculture workers, I think, in November or whatever. The other one will be for, you know, kind of the general stuff, and so there's some things happening.
Yeah, and one of the things he mentioned was, the co, like they said, the counselors are out there. We're not getting to them fast enough. And we got these problems coming up.
Yep. Where? And it's now at the state assisting, taking overall funding. They're pushing the children's mental health. Like before, nobody, it's service that was, wasn't offered through these regions because no way to fund it.
Nothing.
So that's why this all changed. So now as we go, it's going to get better and better and better as far as the services go, so. Hopefully everybody's able to utilize.
Jesse's, Jesse's in contact too. Someone, he wants to contact Jesse. It'll be fine. We'll talk about that and work through the, you know.
Yep, he's just.
They have an available office too.
I believe they would have a space there they could utilize too, so.
Yeah. In other words,
Conference room.
It doesn't work in the school systems all the time.
No.
Because of the fear pressure.
No, but I know the schools are doing some good stuff.
And, yeah, there's, yeah, we love the fact they're doing it. It's just, if the kids won't go because of peer pressure, we need to get another place.
Adults all, I mean, it's a whole big thing, so.
They even have a service dog.
So that's all I had.
Can we get someone to say?
Might need it.
Technically smelled me funny. I had, uh,
Well, you shouldn't put this stuff there.
My account meeting last Monday, Monday night, and, um, uh, a lot of discussion on a lot of, uh, extra funding that has been coming through with CARES Act and all that. And, um, NIACOG has given out hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants for, for some stuff, for how, a lot of housing stuff. Um, they've got the revolving vault, revolving loan fund that is, um, like she said last, last month or two months ago, it's pretty much empty. They emptied out like three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, this revolving loan fund, but so there's been a lot of money, extra money for, for majority of the housing upgrades, try to gain more housing. Um, kind of working with the state on the, like the storefront stuff, where if you're, if you've got a business or something, if you got an apartment up above there has been vacant for five years, plus you're eligible for these grants to get them upgraded to, to apartment, I mean, so that we can create housing around here. So it sounds like they've, they've been, that's been a lot of their time is, is doing all that, getting all the funding out to the people that need it. It's been a good, good thing, so hopefully see some repercussion down the road from that, but. Um, that's all I had. So, um, next week for the agenda, we've got possible, or discussion on, uh, agreement, development agreement.
Yeah, I'll just keep it on.
Okay, and then also add with that discussion, on the window, that's, well, please. We can just have that entire discussion on our own. Both, we have both options. Hopefully we'll have the right information we need. Uh, I'm going to help with green also. Okay, anything else?
No.
Take most to adjourn. Second. All right, all favor I? Me adjourn, thanks, everybody.